The City of Waukegan is replacing about twenty thousand water meters with a new automated meter which provide for an accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call (866) 270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than thirty minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter which transmits your water usage data to the city will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at (866) 270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at (847) 599-2997.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September twenty-first, two thousand fifteen Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
President.
Alderman Ziger.
President.
Alderman Moizio.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Bishop Colburn, please. Please stand for the pledge and the invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another City Council meeting. We thank you that your word said that the two thousand years ago, man ought to always pray. We're praying for our city. We pray in the name for our mayor and for all our aldermen and all of us in authority. You said again, pray for them that are in authority. Pray for our citizens and pray for our community. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Pledge to the witnesses to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop. I appreciate your job and responsibility. Bishop. As many of you know, being mayor is not an easy job. Being a mayor, sometimes you have to rely on people to help you through difficult situations. And I'll admit that I don't know everything about different areas of the city or the different people of the city or different communities, so diverse. So I formed a committee, and I formed a committee of people I know of three of them very, very well. They've really contributed immensely to the African-American community. They're my friends, they're my colleagues, they are residents of the City of Waukegan. And I asked them if they would step up to the plate and help me make this city a better place for all of us to live, work, and play. And each one of them said to me they would, in fact, help me make this a better place for all of us. At this point, I'd like to recognize and present to you the five people that I've chosen to help me through endeavors that may be difficult at times. Those individuals are Glenn Beckwith. Glenn, would you please come forward? Reverend Ricky, Rick J. Harris. And a guy that I have to tell you, we've shared many things, haven't we? Angelo, Angelo Kyle. Ladies and gentlemen, you're looking at five people who have proven leadership, who have the ability to make change, affect change, and make this city great once again. So I would like you to give them a round of applause. Thank you so much, Angelo. Thank you so much. I go to the church. Thanks, everybody. Thanks a lot. We'll be in touch. He's been, he's been a minister for forty years. We're gonna give him the honor of naming a street after him. It's gonna be, Steel Court is the current street, and it's gonna be renamed Honorary Brother Terry Attwater Boulevard. This will take place October first, and I will be present for that, Patricia Jones. And thank you so much for suggesting it because he is a very good man, and it will be my privilege and honor to be there during the dedication. So please let him know that this is, this will be taken care of. Thank you. Well, two really good things just happened, and now I'd like the Fire Chief to make a presentation. Rico Farrell.
Okay, thank you. This is kinda bittersweet. I've asked the mayor to give me a couple minutes to address City Council, and due to family needs, effective October the fifth, I'm announcing my retirement. For the last thirty-one and a half years, my parents have been grand, my main supporters. They've been there for me. They instill the values that you see standing before you right now, the godly values that I have. Every step of my life, my parents have always been there. And anybody that knows me, I always honor my father, my mother, I honor the Bible. It tells us to honor our parents, not just saying yes, sir, and no, sir, but when they need your help, you honor them. So this is bittersweet. It's not bitter because I gotta honor them, that's a joy for me to go and help my parents. And I would hope that one day, when I get in that predicament, my children will come and do the same thing for me. So I wanna say that Mayor Motley, if anybody wants to know anything about Mayor Motley, the fairness of him, the character of him, you ask me, I'll tell you. Mayor Motley, when he gave me this opportunity, he said, "You run the fire department." I'm like, "I'm not gonna tell you what to do. I trust you, I've known you all these years, I know your expertise, you run the fire department." He's been a supporter, the things that I wanted to do, the vision that I had for the fire department, he never stood one time in the way, but he always gave me the green light and he says, "I support you." He's been there when I wanted to run ideas off of him, he was always there. I enjoyed working with the City Council, and most of all, I enjoyed being a servant to the citizens of Waukegan. Because we all, ones that read the Bible, we know that if you are gonna be the greatest, you have to be the servant. So I thank you for an opportunity to serve you all. And this is such an awesome opportunity that I've had with the City of Waukegan. I've wanted to be a firefighter since I was nine years old. I'm living the dream. I thank God for your support, and know this, that the Waukegan Fire Department will be in good hands. Why, I insist on it. When I talk to the mayor, I insist on it. We will choose a candidate that will represent the Waukegan Fire Department as well as you all. So once again, I wanna say, thank you, Mayor Motley, thank you, City Council, Bishop Colburn. He was another person that was very instrumental in my life from the time I was this high. A lot of the values that you see in me came from that man sitting right over there. So once again, thank you, and God bless you all.
Ladies and gentlemen, in this room is a man of character and class named Rico Farrell. Last, last month, Rico came to my office, and he said to me that he was, he was, he asked me what I thought about his resignation. I asked him to please take a month and evaluate the circumstances and situation, and at the end of that month, come back to me. We'd sit down and we'd work and see if he could stay or not. And I, he is such an honorable man to take his parents over his, over his job. I have nothing but respect for him, and it's gonna, I told Rico Farrell that he and I would choose the next chief together. He would have input into that selection. And we both agree that the next chief of police for the City of Wauke, for the chief of fire, the fire department for the City of Waukegan would be a man with his same character and class. And Rico, you do have a certain charisma, so we're looking for that as well. So Rico, it's been my honor and my pleasure to have you work with me, not for me, with me. The day when you came to my house and we sat down for an hour and a half, I knew, when you left, that I had made the right decision. I knew it caused some controversy and confusion, but at the end of the day, it has been my privilege to work with you, Mr. Farrell. So thank you very much. Arthur Cobb, Waukegan Main Street.
Mayor Motley, I would like to thank you and Alderman Taylor, Valco, and Villa Lobos, City Department Managers and Staff for attending our annual meeting. Every year, our bylaws state a meeting must be held and new board members and officers elect, elected to govern our organization. This year, four new members were elected to three-year, three-year terms, and they are Josh Beadle, Executive Director and Founder of Three Brothers Theater, Aaron Cheven, a lifelong resident of Waukegan and proprietor of Booner's Place on Washington Street, Tom LaBaron, a Waukegan resident and managing partner of TR's Front Row on Greenwood and Seventeen North Bar and Grill on Genesee Street, and finally Cynthia Vargas, Communications Manager for the State's Attorney's Office. Our officers are President Megan McKenna, Vice President will be John Quinn, Treasurer Matthew Burleson, and Secretary Dulce Ortiz. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Peggy Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Motley and Council Members. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of Clean Power of Lake County. Just wanted to share with you all that we did have our beach cleanup this summer, and we had a hundred and twenty individuals and volunteers come out and join us. We had a wonderful time, great time cleaning up the beach. However, we, we can't clean up the air. But first of all, I wanna thank Aldermans Sager and Alderman Villalobos for coming out to the cleanup, and then also I wanna thank Lisa May for all that you do for Friends of Waukegan. This summer, we also had the Title V Permit Hearing down at the Illinois Beach State Resort. We had a hundred and fifty people come out, although it was a successful turnout, we did, we are having, the permit is being held up with a lot of bureaucracy by the company and the I E P A and all of the hoops that they're having to jump through, but we're making way with that. And then also, wanted to share with you all of an upcoming event. It is going to be October fourteenth on a Wednesday. It is the National Climate Day of Action. It's going to be an open meeting with some of our coalition partners to talk about the work that we're doing for the community and also how we can take action and clean up the air and the water in Waukegan. We are working to finalize the location, that, that the meeting will be taking place at seven PM, and we'll send out more information as we secure the location. If any of the aldermen would like more information, feel free to meet with us afterwards, and we can provide more information and connect with us after the meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Many of you may not know this, but we're gonna have the Christmas Cantada this weekend, and we have a representative from the Christmas Cantada here to speak on behalf of that. Please step forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jiyoung, and I'm a volunteer from International Youth Fellowship, it's a nonprofit youth organization. And again, we're holding a Gra Shas Christmas Cantada show. It's gonna be at the Genesee Theater this coming Saturday, September twenty-sixth, at seven PM. And just to share a little bit about the Gra Shas Choir, the Gra Shas Choir are originally from Korea, and they were just like amateur singers, and after fifteen years, they were founded. They actually recently won international choral competition in Germany. That's one of the prestigious choral music competitions in the world. So now, because they won the first prize, now they're officially the world best choir. So, and now it's all of your opportunity to come and watch their free show on this Saturday. So, and through the Christmas Cantada, we all, you know, all the volunteers and as well as the Gra Shas Choir members, they want to bring happiness, joy, and, you know, just joy to families and the community in Waukegan and all the cities around. And, you know, admission to the Christmas Cantada is absolutely free, and I will put, I already put tickets outside, as you can, you know, you can take some as you leave. And although we're doing this for the community, but all these things can be done by the community. So I really hope all of you can, we only have five days left, but we're, I'm asking all of you to spread the word to people, and because it's a free show. So anyone is welcome, and all of you who are here is welcome to come, and you're invited to the show. So again, it's gonna be at the Genesee Theater this Saturday, seven PM. So, you know, anyone, you know, if you really love musical, so it's a really live, live musical, so anyone can come out and enjoy the show, and please come as early as possible because it's first come, first served seating. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would, I would, I would encourage all of you to attend this event. It is a breathtaking event. The, the way, the stage presence of the performers is awesome, the colors, the pageantry is, it's religious-based, but there are other parts of the presentation that you would also enjoy. So please, bring your family, bring your kids, come, I went last year, I was very impressed when I left, so I think it'd be a great event for all of us to attend. Next is Mary Reese.
I'm here tonight concerning the problem I have. I'm here tonight concerning the work that I had done to my house from the grant, and I haven't heard anything, and I know my alderman, Ms. Newsom, came out and looked at my house, and I was wondering if she could tell you all what she seen when she came out there.
Ma'am, just make your presentation, please.
She just basically wanted to find out, I guess, if Ms. Newsom was gonna have something to say in light of the community.
No, we're not making responses to Ms. Reese, no.
All right. So you have the next name on there.
Mr. Blanks.
When I was here before, and we was addressing the issues concerning what had happened to Ms. Reese's house, and primarily how she was addressed and how she was talked to. Because as I said before, our citizens here, regardless of whatever work is done on their house, they want it done with quality, and they wanna be respected when the work is done. And the way that Mr. Reverend Ezell Robinson had talked down to her and telling her to stop, telling her daughter to tell her to stop crying because nothing else was gonna be done, that is a problem. And that is something, you know, when I come here, it's not as much as it is for, it's not as much for you all as it is for our community because they need to be made aware when we have people within our community that is misrepresenting the best interests of our community, and particularly our seniors. We made it our goal this year, as an organization, to address the issues and the needs of our seniors, as well as our students and our youth, who many might not be able to speak for themselves or have a fear of it. And so that is the problem that we had with Mr. Robinson, and there's a history and a pattern that goes with that. This is my good friend here. This is my friend. This is Mr. Arthur Brumfield. As you can recall, on August the tenth, ten years ago, the city tore his house down. There's no doubt in my mind, that could have been a better approach taken, because the man wasn't helped, the end result situation was helped. And what was told to Mr. Brumfield by Mr. Ezell Robinson is that, "I'm gonna take your house." Am I right, Mr. Brumfield? And Mr. Brumfield asked Mr. Robinson, he says, "I asked Mr. Brumfield," so what did he tell Mr. Robinson after that? He told Mr. Robinson, "If you take my house from me, it's gonna kill me." Well, the only neighbor this man have next door to him is Mr. Robinson, and has often said, "You should want for your neighbor what you want for yourself." And Mr. Mr. Brumfield's house is torn down. Mr. Robinson is still standing. So I have a problem when you address and you talk to our seniors like this. This man is homeless, and there's no doubt in my mind, when there are those tell me that they did the best they could to save this man's house, I don't think so. When your code enforcer at the time, who is now sending to the position of director, when the code enforcer come around and tell this man, "I'm gonna take your house," what do you, what, what are a man supposed to feel like that who home is bought and paid for? Someone come in my property and tell me, "I'm gonna take your house from you," so you put him in a state of resistance. I know I would. So these are the kinda things that perhaps maybe you all didn't know that were said to this man, when y'all thought he was being hard with you all, but you might have not known the hidden agenda why he was still in that way, why he was putting up with such a resistance. But this is my friend, and...
Thank you, Mr. Blanks.
Say it again?
Thank you, that's three minutes.
All right, so, but we'll be back. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Minutes, motion to approve the regular minute, meeting minutes of September eighth, two thousand fifteen. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Villalobos. Halls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Next item, Committee Reports, Public Works Committee, Alderman Newsom, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our Public Works Committee met this evening, we had two items on the agenda. Item A, Public Works Committee recommends an ISO move that we authorize the proper city officials to purchase salt for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen season from the State's Central Management Services contract for an amount not to exceed four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Funds for this purchase are available in line item two-two-eight-nine-two-two-eight-two-five-four-eight-five, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziger.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, Public Works Committee recommends an ISO move that we authorize the proper city officials to execute a custodial water main agreement between the City of Waukegan and Joel Kennedy for construction of an apartment building, reference the property at the intersection of Green Bay Road and Frolic Avenue, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziger.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
That is all, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Newsom. Finance Committee, Alderman Valco, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. One quick second here, I just caught something. Item A, the Finance Committee recommends the proper city officials to extend the external auditor agreement with Baker, Tilly, Virchow, Kraus, LLP, for the fiscal year ending April thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, for an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Funding will come from budget code one hundred dash one zero six, seven-two-four-four-seven-six, five-five-five, dash nine-one-five, nine-two-four-four-seven-six, and five-nine-five, dash four-five-nine, five-two-four-four-seven-six, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziger.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item C, Finance Committee recommends the proper city officials to award a contract to McGlattery, LLP, the sole bidder for internal audit services, including an assessment of specific aspects of the city's water and sewer system, for an amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars, coming from budget code and funding five-five-five-nine-one-five-nine-two-four-four-seven-six, and ISO move.
Item C, Finance Committee recommends the proper city officials to award a contract to McGlattery, LLP, the sole bidder for internal audit services, including an assessment of specific aspects of the city's water and sewer system, for an amount not to exceed $85,000, coming from budget code funding 555-915-924476, and ISO move. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item D, please bear with me here, because there's something missing, I'm putting it in here. The city recom, excuse me, the Finance Committee recommends the proper city officials to waive the bid requirement based on sole source criteria, and award the contract to Inner City, excuse me, Enter Pacific Incorporated, for the amount of $35,967, to procure and install security cameras at lots G, H, K, and L at the Metro Station, budget code funding Your Honor, these are continuation of the camera system that we've already installed at the city garage by the Genesee Theater, and they're all gonna be on the same system, and ISO move. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item E, Finance Committee recommends the proper city officials to issue a request for proposal for repair and replacement of the shooting range ventilation system, and ISO move. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes? Last item, item F, the Committee recommends to adopt an ordinance, providing for the issuance of not to exceed $14,500,000 of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2015B, is in boy, of the City of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, and for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay for the principal and interest of said bonds. What this is, council and citizens in the audience, is as if you were refinancing your house, you're taking it down, the interest rate is now down by us refinancing, we're calling it refunding, but it's refinancing, we're saving the city about $600,000. Also, if you listened, that there's the last, or if you're reading along, there's something on the last item there that says, "The Illinois, for a levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay, to pay the principal and the interest on said bonds." We are not instituting a new levy, it's already there. We are not instituting a new levy, and ISO move. And also, the, the date for these bonds is the same date, the date hasn't changed. And thank you, Ms. Miguelsky, our Finance Director, because of this bond restructuring, we're gonna save over $600,000 on these bonds, which is phenomenal. A motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you, Alderman Valco. Public Safety Committee, Alderman Tempest, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. First item, the Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to draft an ordinance to reflect the placement of a stop sign at southbound Cornell Road at intersection with MacArthur Drive, and I would so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsom. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes.
Item number two, the Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation, and accept a 2016 STEP grant number OP-16-0048, in the amount of $62,000. And with this will give fees to start an enforcement, this will be on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, so drive a little extra careful those days. It'll be through the calendar year, through next September.
Alderman Tempest, the, the correct amount is 60, $62,288 is the correct amount. Will you give that again, please? The correct amount of that was $62,288. That's what I said. Okay, correct. A motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item three, the Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to seek bids for a contract to remove and replace a total of 19 emergency alert sirens over the course of a three-year period. I would so move. Those are the error sirens that go off, and God, they, how old are they? Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsom. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes. A new business recommended actions by Corporation Council, item A, approval of payroll dated September 18th, 2015, in the amount of $1,430,278.73, and final payout in the amount of Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, please get all your block parties into, into Clerk Maria. The approval of block parties by, motion by Alderman Ziegler, second by Alderman May. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item D, approval of Ms. Recordia Jelly Bean Candy Days fundraiser for April 29th and April 30th, 2016. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Tempest. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item E, approved Girl Scout Cookie Program door-to-door sales from January 1st through January 26th, 2016. Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Villalobos. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approval of Waukegan partisan design for the 2016-2017 city sticker. I emailed all of you a copy of that. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I don't like it, I have to vote no.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
And Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item G, approval of following raffle sales, Waukegan High School Association of Music Parents, Waukegan High School Booster Raffle Club, Waukegan High School Association of Music Parents, Fat Cat Rescue, Olson's Ace Hardware, and Sunset Fellowship. Motion by Alderman Ziegler, second by Alderman Villalobos. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item H, approval of 2015 Halloween, it should be 2016 Halloween trick and trick-or-treat for October 31st, 2015, I'm sorry, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman May. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item I, monthly treasury report for August 2015. A motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Ziegler, to place on file. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinances and resolution, item A, ordinance amending section 21-122, limited parking by adding handicap parking at 809 May Street. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, ordinance amending 21-121, entitled no parking at specific times, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, 6:00 AM, any day by adding Tremont Court, both sides, from its intersection with River Road, for a distance of 200, 527 feet, and Churchill Lane, both sides, from its intersection with Tremont Court, for the distance of 200 feet. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Just wanna give a shout-out to YCC and Youth Bill in Ribbon Luke, this Saturday, from 11 to 3 o'clock. We're gonna be partnering with those three groups to do some alley cleanup in the first It was brought to me by Ribbon Luke, and they wanted to reach out and try to get as many residents in the first ward, particularly that on the west side of McAllister, south of George Avenue up to 10th, and west up to Jackson. So, all those who would like to participate and come out, feel free, have some lunch, and do some good fellowship. Tonight, Your Honor, I, I was extremely proud to see this establishment of this advisory committee. I think you've said it earlier, about diversity, and about those being involved. What an awesome list of candidates you've chosen. Not to highlight anyone more than the other, but one of them happens to be my third grade, Mrs. Beckwith? Third grade? My third grade teacher. So... Hold on a second, hold, hold, wait a minute. The first year, the best student. And, and, and a host of others. What a dynamic group, and it sounds like Ms. Jones spearheaded that, and obviously, that's just her nature, to take the lead on things such as that, and bringing it to not only yourself, but to us. But what is more impressive to me, is how they were here tonight. And I hope this will be the example for all other appointments, Your Honor. I've talked about this, and I think all of us have. When we appoint people to these voluntary positions, I know they're time-consuming, but they're meaningful. I personally would like to see who they are, so then we can go back and then spread the good news about who they are and what they're gonna be doing in our community. So, I thank you all for being here, and it looks like you brought your fanfare with you, there's nothing wrong with that. I think Gideon Missionary Baptist Church might've led that on. Last but not least, Mr. Rico Farrell. I don't think anyone can say enough what he has done to shape the Waukegan Fire Department, not just as chief, but as a firefighter, and earning, earning the position of fire chief. Not saying others don't, but I personally know about his quest to be the leader over there. Not only do I thank you, I appreciate you, and obviously, you're going to do something that is gonna be blessed with to you and your future and your family, taking care of your parents. That is, words cannot express how that makes me feel, and I know how it's gonna make them feel. But I also wanna close out and say, the respect that he has, has shown through his leadership, the leadership team of yours, Mayor, as he was going back to his seat, your entire leadership team, senior staff, gave hugs, some embrace, and that is what I'm talking about. That's the Waukegan spirit that I know. So, congratulations to you folks, congratulations to the Advisory Board, and move on Waukegan. Thank you.
Alderman Ziegler.
I too would like to thank Chief Rico. I remember, right after my election, I had stopped to see him and take a tour of the fire station. Not only with his attitude, his personality, and the tour, I was very much impressed. And you will be missed. I wish you'd hang around for a little bit longer, 'cause I wanna come back and take another tour. Good luck to you, sir. God bless you. Thank you.
Alderman Moizio.
Yeah, sentiments too for Chief Farrell, 31 years of service, very honorable, and what a blessing to be able to retire on your own terms and take care of the people that took care of you. Hats off.
Alderman Villalobos.
Thank you. Bear with me, I got quite a bit here. Just recap some of the past week for me, or two weeks, rather, it was very eventful. I got a list of things that I attended, and things that happened in the fourth ward. For those who aren't aware, Waukegan Artwise kicked off about last week for the theme, "Those Who Serve." You'll notice there's art, and the art gallery's downtown Waukegan, Urban Edge is hosting the, "Those Who Serve" with Brian Spencer Reed. You're welcome to also volunteer for Artwise at the Urban Edge, just pop over there, right on the corner of County and Clayton, excuse me, and sign up for a two-hour shift. So, that was a great kickoff, it goes through Veterans Day. Also, there was a 9/11 ceremony at the Firefighters Memorial Park, that was intense. I got the opportunity to also speak with Greater Waukegan Development and Business Incubation Hub, right here in Genesee Street, which is also fourth ward. Was able to start up a Neighborhood Watch on Jacobson Court, that had their first meeting last Friday. I was also able to meet the new owners of the Fulton Street Rehabilitation House, which serves veterans. There was also Waukegan Township's Statement House graduation that occurred last Saturday. Fiesta's Patriots Parade occurred in the fourth ward as well, which had quite a few thousand community members. There was also, as Art Cobb mentioned, the Waukegan Main Street's Annual Meeting, which is also fourth ward. I attended the Glen Lake Terrorist Nursing Home Rehabilitation Inaugural First Responders Event Barbecue. There was also Chicago Community Learning Center had their kickoff events, which is located at two, two-twenty-two North County Street, fourth ward. This is a free education for adults, so it's great to see that happening right here in Waukegan in the fourth ward. There is also, I was able to attend a service for Christian Faith Fellowship Church at two-twenty-eight North County Street, and I also attended City Reach Waukegans Parish, their opening service, which is being temporarily housed in Zion, but they're looking for something in Waukegan. For any people out there who are the leads of parish, please contact me, I'd be happy to come and see a service and try to connect with you. Upcoming, there is in October, Waukegan Public Library's tenth annual Storytelling Festival on Friday, October, October thirtieth. Ten years the festival's been going on, this is a great opportunity to see storytelling from national storytellers, wonderful events. And to cap it off, Fire Chief Farrell, sorry to see you going, I was looking forward to work with you a lot longer, we were just starting to connect, so it's a little sad to see you go. That's all, thank you so much.
Alderman Newsom?
Thank you. I too would like to congratulate the Advisory Board that the mayor has put together, echo what Alderman Cunningham said, awesome group of individuals, and I know that they will do a good work along with the mayor in taking our city forward. And thank you for volunteering to help, it is an honor, an honor to have you as part of working with the city. And to our outgoing Chief Farrell, like you said, bittersweet, it's been a joy to work with you as Chief of Fire. It's, it's an honor to give back to your parents, too. You quoted a part of a scripture where it says, "The honor of your father and mother," but the other part of that is that your days may be long on this earth, and I believe that yours will, because you are honoring your father and your mother. I'm going to miss you, and I wanted to thank you again for attending the block party that I had this past Saturday, you and your wife and your staff that was out there to bring excitement to a lot of the kids. They, they didn't scream so much when the police hub was their substation, but when they saw the fire truck coming, and then the ambulance after that, I mean, they just went wild. So thank you so much, and enjoy the next part, phase of your life. Thanks for giving so many years to the city of Waukegan, your dedication, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Alderman Tempest?
Thank you. I too would like to honor the Fire Chief and his years of service. He's set a great, great example. Office doors always open to me as chairman, and I appreciate the leadership that he did give to the fire department. I also want to congratulate Rick Harris, he has a special place in my heart. I used to sweat him down, the poor guy, I used to, I had to get him down to weight, and we had three outstanding wrestlers, and he sweat the best, so he had to go down the lowest. But Ricky was, was a great team member, bring back great memories, Ricky, he really does. I should call you pastor, what a, what a great career you've gone through, what a leadership you've turned out to be, but you had that in high school, too, you were meant to be, and I really appreciate what you've done for the community. You really provided great leadership, which I see people going back to the Bible a little more and getting more, a little more religion, and you know, Waukegan may turn around, we're in the right direction, we're in the right direction, and thank you for all you've done for the city. Thank you.
Alderman May?
I will echo everyone before me and wish Chief Farrell a happy retirement and blessings to you and your family, that's a wonderful story, so God bless. The only, the thing I'm going to announce is the, that Alderman Villalobos touched on was the Waukegan Artwise series that's going on, started on September eleventh, and it's going through Veterans Day. Besides like the art, the Urban Edge Art Gallery, which is fantastic, it's open Monday through Saturday during the series up until Veterans Day, so you can go in any day, we encourage people to come with school groups, families, it's, it's a great event, a great art show for anyone to see, excuse me, exhibit. But there also are writer's series, film screenings, performing arts going on at Clockwise Theater, Three Brothers Theater, even Bohem Park Theater. They've also incorporated a veteran hiring events on September thirtieth at the Waukegan Public Library from ten to noon. They're going to help veterans get their resumes ready for a hiring event that's actually taking place in Nor Chicago on October eighth, Veteran Military Job Fair on October eighth from ten to two. So the theme of the whole art series is Those Who Serve, so besides all the art events, they also are reaching out to try to help give back to these veterans and help, help them with finding employment, as we all know, that's one of the difficulties that these men and women who serve, that's one of the difficulties that they have when they come back home. So I just want to give a shout out to the, all the many people who are involved with the Waukegan Artwise events, and you can go to waukeganartwise.com to get all the details and information on the series, and that's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Velco?
Chief Farrell, go back a long way, sir. So it came as a complete surprise to me tonight, you hit it real good. So much, in fact, that when I was coming up to the committee meeting tonight, and you were going down the stairs, hey, Chief, how you doing, man, I wish I could be like you, and then you said something to me, not about the retirement, but you said something to me, and we'll keep that between us, and now you can, sir, now you can. You're a Class X, sir, take good care of yourself, we'll see you. That's all I have.
Alderman Taylor?
I too would like to mention Artwise, in that I'd love to see more children come and see this exhibit, it's so educational. I'd love to see Girl Scout troops, Brownie troops come and see this, take advantage of it, it's a free expedition, expedition, ah, exhib, exhibition, exhibit, yeah, I'll spit it out. Please, take advantage of it. Like I said, it's an awesome exhibit. To these lovely people here, congratulations, your resumes are so impressive, but more importantly, the heart and soul that you bring to this community is beyond that, beyond that, so thank you. Chief Farrell? I'll try and get through this. Everything that you see on a daily basis, and the compassion and care that you give to this city, is phenomenal. You will have a place in this city's heart forever, and I wish you the best, God bless, please take care of your parents and your family, but you're always welcome here, always. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to have the last word. And it's really funny, because when I, when I took office, I said, and I said it very unashamedly, that I would bring God back to this council. I selected three ministers on that board. I made a commitment to Pastor Stevenson and his church that this would happen. It has happened, and I can say to all, all five of you today, I am so proud of a lot of things in Waukegan, a lot of things have changed in two and a half years, and I think I'm most proud of our cultural diversity, I'm most proud that now we are getting back to one Waukegan, and I made that commitment to all of you, we're there, and I look for nothing but a bright future for our community, for our citizens, and don't give up on Waukegan, because we're going to surprise you. That being said, motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Taylor to adjourn. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned, thank you.
The city of Waukegan is replacing about twenty thousand water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information, or call eight-six-six-two-seven-zero-nine-six-two-nine. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than thirty minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter.